Council meeting in March. Here we have Ryan Cate from K E R M, K G U S Live. This is being broadcast live on the local radio stations and it's also being preserved and will be up on YouTube channel too. We also have Ms. Cindy Shealy here from the Torrington Telegram. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and I've asked Councilman Victorin to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is the mayor's informational items and I've asked Rhonda Estes, our senior accounting clerk, to come tonight and give us a short presentation during this section on the Wyoming Community Gas Program. While she comes up, if she will, I will just mention that the goal of the Wyoming Community Gas Program is to create an incentive for competition among the natural gas providers to get the lowest cost to the consumer. Also, the money's come in or come back to Torrington under this program. This year, we were told by Ms. Estes, and she presented us with a check for thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And very briefly, this money is used for such things as an E W C scholarship, the Dare Golf Tournament, golf passes for fundraisers for Rotary, and the Valley Christian School and so on. Can you explain to us just the basics about this program, Ms. Estes?
Sure. Many years ago, actually back when Ed Jelavich was mayor, they were at a WHAM meeting and they were discussing the cost of their gas bills. And at that time, we had a sole supplier of gas. And so several communities, actually ten of them, they went together and formed a group and went to the gas company at that time and asked if they could create some competition and go out and purchase gas from a gas company. And so at that time, they became, the ten of them, became the Torrington Division. And that was going pretty well. And so the billing is still done through our gas company that we currently have. And it's, and they do the billing and the meter reading, any of the services. It's just the commodity, commodity portion that they were going out and asking for the competition for. And so they've done that and any of that money through the Wyoming Community Gas, they labeled themselves as Wyoming Community Gas, any of that money that is made in that program, it's not to, it's not to make money, so those, that money comes back to the communities. And so that's where those funds that we receive each year is where those funds are coming from. And so it is going to be our balloting season here, April 6th through the 26th, people will be getting their ballots. And there's several ways that they can look for the different rate options that they have and the commodity portion of it that different suppliers are offering. And so they can check prices for that. The Wyoming Community Gas is the sole supplier that gives back to your communities and we just like to remind people that, keep it in their mind so that our community has benefited well from the money that we've received back. So if you have a ballot and you want help, you're welcome to come to City Hall. Any of us girls can help you with that, as well as you can call or do it online. And so a lot of times, people will actually group them together. If they have, you know, five or six accounts, they usually give us just even a little bit better price for it. So you're welcome to give us a call or stop by and we can help you out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And just one last thing on that issue. There are a whole lot of entities and projects that benefit from this money in the city of Torrington. Oftentimes, you'll see a little sign there, Wyoming Community Gas, so look for that. Thank you. Historically, in Wyoming, cities have been tasked with providing parks and recreational activities. Spring is here. This city provides an abundance of recreational activities and parks. There are numerous city parks. We have a special dog park, the Carol Thompson Dog Park. That was a public-private cooperative effort. We have the swimming pool. We have the golf course. We have an RV park. We have soccer fields, baseball and softball fields, a walking path, and I invite everybody to enjoy all these parks and activities that we have here in Torrington. Just a notice to pet owners, please clean up after your dogs. The dogs are your responsibility and that's a great help to the city if people will take care of their dogs and their dog waste, so thank you for that. I was advised that the Bread Doctor made a national magazine. Councilman Kelly brought this to me. This is the A A A R P magazine that you get if, I think you're 50 or older probably. It's a national magazine and they're recognized in this magazine. And it's got a picture of him with his father and, or him with his daughter. And so it's available in the current issue of the Art Magazine, so there's that. Now, as always, please slow down, watch for pedestrians since spring is here, watch for motorcycles, bicyclists, and there's a lot more joggers and such out there, so please keep an eye on them. And please refrain from your cell phone use while driving. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes from the March 7th, 23 council meeting as published. I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the consent agenda. I have a second from Councilman Deal. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. This has been published and sent to all the council members and appears that you've all been provided a copy. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we call the public forum. I don't believe there are any, is anything put in the box tonight? I don't see any and haven't been advised of any, but just for informational purposes, if a citizen wants to speak to the council at this point in the agenda, usually it's at this point in the agenda, you can fill out a form and receive two minutes of time to address the council. No action will be taken, but that's an opportunity for the public to address the council. Next item on the agenda are the action items. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's appointments. And for this meeting, gentlemen, there are three things. I have, are asking you to advise, approve and consent to Anna Barnes as the, I guess, additional municipal associate judge. Right now, John Patrick is the municipal judge. Kenneth Brown is municipal associate judge and I'm asking to include Ms. Anna Barnes as a municipal associate judge. I know Anna, she's a practicing attorney in town. She is also a circuit court magistrate and is, I believe, the town attorney for Lingle right now and is engaged in private practice. So that's Ms. Barnes' background. I'm also asking to, for the council to approve the appointment of Gary Olson to the Lodging Tax Board. Sarah Chairs was on that board for years and chairman for many years. I've had several conversations with her. Her explanation of what makes a good member for that board is somebody who is passionate about tourism in this community and Goshen County and in Torrington. That's their big item, promote tourism and bring in people, which benefits the community. So I've asked that the council approve the appointment of Gary Olson here in town. Gary Olson is the owner of TDS and probably other things in this community and has a big building just west of the courthouse here, right in town. So that's Mr. Olson. And finally, on the appointments, the Torrington Urban Systems Committee, I have asked Chief of Police Matt Johnson to be on there and he's agreed to accept an appointment to be on that committee. And Kelly Sitner, who is here with us tonight, I can see him straight back from me, has agreed to be appointed as a member of the Torrington Urban Systems Committee. So if the council has any questions about those appointments I just went over, I'm willing to entertain any questions.
I don't have a question on the appointees, Mr. Mayor, but I am curious what the Torrington Urban Systems Committee does.
Well, I may defer to the Director of Public Works for a brief background. I have a, obviously not as good a understanding as he does, he's been on that committee for a long time. So, Mr. Harkins, could you give us a brief explanation of that committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Urban Systems Committee is a state-funded coalition of all municipalities that want to participate throughout the state. There's a pot of money that is then divvied up between each of the communities. Currently, Torrington receives, I think, around a hundred thousand dollars a year. I think the balance of our account is about 1.1 million right at, right at the moment. Those funds can be used on what are classified as federal aid roads or routes. Some of the roads within Torrington would be like East D Street, East M, East P, West C, those types of roads that are basically major roads or collector roads within the city. Also, obviously, the various county roads are also eligible for participation in this, in this program. The committee decides what the best use of the funds would be and then approaches the state to construct a project, so to speak, and utilize those funds in the, in the construction of that project.
Thank you. Any further questions for me?
Do you want these appointments confirmed en masse or?
Yes, I would ask for a motion to confirm Ms. Barnes as municipal associate judge, Mr. Gary Olson as Lodging Tax Board Member, and Mr. Matt, or Chief Matt Johnson and Mr. Kelly Sitner as City of Torrington Representatives for the Urban Systems Board. So if, I would, I would ask for a motion to include all three in one motion.
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson and a second from Councilman Victorin to approve Ms. Barnes as municipal associate judge, Mr. Gary Olson to be on the Lodging Tax Board, Chief Matt Johnson to be on the Torrington Urban Systems Board, and Mr. Kelly Sitner to be on the Urban Systems Board. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor of consenting to those appointments signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. All right, those people are appointed. Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is ordinance third reading. Mr. Eddington, could you read that ordinance, please?
So the ordinance creating and enacting Section 13.20.040 of Chapter 13.20 of the Torrington Municipal Code authorizing and directing execution of the Green Energy Program, subscription confirmation by the City of Torrington with the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. This is the third reading. I know that there've been some questions from council on the first two readings. Are there any questions from council on this third reading?
Have there been any changes?
Have not been any changes. All right, if there is no further, are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve on third reading the, the ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of the Green Energy Program.
I would move to approve the ordinance.
I have a motion from council, Councilman Kelly, to approve the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance on third reading authorizing and directing execution of the Green Energy Program signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. That ordinance is passed on third reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance on second reading. Mr. Eddington, could you read that for us, please?
An ordinance repealing Section 13.24.030 of Torrington Municipal Code, 2023 revisions relating to deposits.
Okay. And this ordinance is presented on second reading. This was a cleanup of the ordinances. This was an O2 ordinance, which contains a procedure for dealing with utility deposits and so on that is obsolete and is no longer in effect, and the idea is to clear it off the books.
I would move to approve this ordinance on second reading.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve this ordinance on second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second? I think I, Councilman Victorin beat you, I believe. I think I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving on second reading this ordinance repealing Section 13.24.030. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay. That ordinance on second reading is passed, repealing Section 13.24.030. Council will now be leaving regular session and will now convene as a Board of Adjustment. First item before the council as a Board of Adjustment is Mr. Mark McMahon is requesting a setback variance at 131 Holly Drive. Mr. Estes, can you give us a little background on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, Mr. McCann is asking for a setback variance on the north side of his property from the acquired twenty, or 30-foot to 23-foot, and on the east side of his property from 30-foot to 20.5-foot. He wishes to build a little bigger garage to store some personal equipment. I've had no comments from the neighbors. Staff would recommend approval. And Mr. McCann is here if you'd like to visit with him. So this is the property in question, if you're not aware of it. It's right above the swimming pool, this property right here. What's unique about this property, it's one of the few that has a full, solid fence around it. Where we at here? Right here. So he wants to put this garage right on the back of this one here. He wants to come right at you with the garage and take this block wall out of here. So really, he's only coming out in front of that block wall a few feet on each side, so. Like again, I've had no, no comments from the neighbors. Staff would recommend approval.
All right, well, this is, this is, this hearing is open to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this request for variance? Either for or against. Seeing no takers, I would close this portion of this public hearing on this request for Council, do you have any further questions of Mr. Estes? I would just, a couple of questions. He's paid the fee. All the appropriate people were served with notice of this request and there's been no objections.
That is correct, Mayor.
I would assume this is going to be the same material as is already on the house now?
I would assume so, but the gentleman's here if you'd like to visit with him.
You may come up here, please.
Councilman Kelly, I haven't got to the building end of it yet, so I couldn't tell you that.
My question was just, is it going to be the same material on this new addition as it is on the old house?
Right, so the house and the cinder block fence are both stucco and we would match existing. The roof line would match existing. There's a circle drive in the front and it wouldn't go out to the circle drive. It would stop about two feet from that circle drive. It would look similar to the two-car garage. You would have on the left side, though, one garage door a foot higher for a decent truck, so.
Are you going to put the block wall on that side too, like it is now, or are you going to eliminate that?
So we won't need the block wall any longer on this side, but we will tie the back of the garage into the existing block wall. So where you, where you saw the arch in the front, there will be, yeah, if you want to go around to the other side. The arch will still be there. The tree will be gone. And as you can see, from the arch right, there will probably be an eight-foot section of that existing cinder block stucco wall. Otherwise, we'll match the, the exact, exact architecture of the building. I was a carpenter for 20 years and ran a cabinet shop for seven, and I was a project manager estimator on a commercial business for another 17 years, so I'm very familiar with construction.
You have the same style r- pitch on that?
Same, yeah, that is a two and a half, 12 pitch on that. And it's got 30-inch overhangs and they're exposed. And I'm working with the lumber yards right now to get a engineered truss to have the same look. What's existing there are cedar two-by-eights that are 27 feet long. You can't get those anymore, so we're going to go with some kind of a treated wood that will be the same height like the two-by-eight and the 30-inch overhang. And then on the underside, there's like a AC-type plywood exterior glue and we'll match that. And we're not going to drop the roof line, we're going to keep it the same and we'll, we'll sew it together so that it matches. I'm going to do the work myself with my brother-in-law, so...
Any further questions for Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would move to approve this variance.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve this variance for Mr. McMahon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Gentlemen, are there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of granting Mark McMahon's request for a setback variance at 131 Holly Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That variance is approved. We are still in session as the Board of Adjustment, and the next item on the agenda for that is Tom McIntosh is requesting a setback variance at 2317 East E Street. Mr. Estes, could you give us some information on that, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mr. McIntosh is asking for a variance to the allowable square footage for an accessory structure. He's allowed 700 in that zone of square footage. Just to catch the council up to speed, I don't know if we went through this, but on most zones in most lots in town, you're allowed 10% of that square footage of that lot for any accessory structures. So, if you want to get more square footage than allowed, in this case, it's 700, they have to come and ask for a variance for additional square footage, which we're getting more and more of because everything we get's bigger and bigger, and we want to store more, so... Mr. McIntosh is asking for an increase in that square footage to 1,140 for a 440-foot square foot increase. And he wants to put it on this lot right here. So, he is totally remodeling this house. He has a little garage here he might want to speak to you about. He spoke to me since we did the variance application. He said he might want to tear this little garage down. He basically wants to put a structure similar to his neighbor to the north. He basically wants to put that structure right there, is what he's asking. And again, I've had no comments from the neighbors, no complaints. Staff would recommend approval.
All right, is Mr. McIntosh present?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and answer any questions council may have?
Sure.
So, basically, counsel, that's basically what that building would look like on that lot. And he might... He had talked to me about maybe removing this little smaller garage that sits there, that little yellow structure. I don't know where my mouse went. Right there. So... He wants to remove that building, I think, don't you, Tom?
Yeah, I think I'll leave it.
Oh, he's going to leave it now, so...
All right. Does counsel have any questions for Mr. McIntosh?
I have one, and just how far is the setback from the alley?
It's going to be the standard 20-foot. And just so you understand, we don't really allow anybody to get closer than 20-foot to the alleys because they stick out into the alley, so that's really... We've had people wanting to do that, and we've never really allowed it. It's a bad precedent to get going, for sure.
You made me stay back 20 feet, so...
Yeah, it'll be 20-foot off the alley right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
It seems like when I drove by the actual property, it seemed like there's more crowded than the picture we look at.
Pardon me?
When you actually drive by the property, it looks like it's a little more crowded than it shows in the picture.
We took trees out.
Yeah.
And once you take those two trees out, it opens it up in the back.
And then, there's a bunch of bushes along the alley.
Yeah, along the alleyway, those aren't out yet, but once you take it out, it sits in there. It's tight. There's no... There won't be any grass.
Yeah.
This is a 10-foot wall structure. It is a little taller than most general garages, so...
What are you going to build it out of?
Two-by-sixes.
I mean, is it going to make the same siding and stuff as the house is going to have?
Yeah, it'll all have LP lapboard siding and insulated and heated.
He's currently replacing all the siding on this house right now. He's ripped it all down and sheeted it, so...
We completely gutted the house. You know, we went through the whole thing, so plan on doing the same thing with what we're doing here. Keep it heated, keep it nice, so I have a good little shop.
Counsel, any further questions for Mr. McIntosh? Thank you. Appreciate it. There's an opportunity for public comments for this variance or against this variance. Is there any member of the public that has public comments for or against the council granting or passing this variance? I see none, so I'll close this public hearing regarding the setback variance at 2317 East E. Do I have a motion?
I would... Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the setback variance for Tom McIntosh.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to remove or to approve the setback variance for Tom McIntosh at 2317 East E Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. Just for clarification, it's not a setback variance, it's a square footage increase variance.
Okay. I'm reading directly off my agenda.
I was, too, so the motion can reflect that language.
Yeah.
If that's amenable to you, Mr. Deal.
Okay. All right, we've fixed that motion in that second. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor of granting this variance at 2317 East E Street signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that variance at 2317 East E Street is approved and granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, counsel, we will return to regular session again. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2023-8. This is a resolution authorizing submission of four Wyoming Homeland Security grant applications for the purchase of essential vehicles, equipment, and security fencing for the city of Torrington. Is Emergency Management Coordinator Chuck Canyon present? Would you want to come up and speak to this, Mr. Canyon?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, do you... Attorney Eddington to read the resolution first?
Yes. Mr. Eddington, would you read the resolution first? Thanks, Jim.
A resolution authorizing submission of four Wyoming Homeland Security grant applications for the purchase of essential vehicles, equipment, and security fencing for the city of Torrington. Whereas the governing body of the city of Torrington desires to participate in the state Wyoming -- state of Wyoming Homeland Security grant program, whereas the governing body of the city of Torrington recognizes need for essential vehicles and equipment, whereas the governing body of the city of Torrington realizes the need for security at the wastewater treatment plant, whereas the governing body of the city of Torrington realizes that the grant will provide 100% funding for the requested projects requiring no local match. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Torrington, a grant application of the amount of $444,058.07 to be submitted to Wyoming Homeland Security for consideration of funding for the purchase of the following essential vehicles and equipment: Torrington Emergency Management Vehicle, $67,548.61; Torrington Police Specialized Mission Vehicle, $85,888.47; Torrington Police Non-Lethal Training Equipment, $11,015.49; Torrington Wastewater Treatment Plant Fence Project, $279,605.50. Further resolved, that Herb Dobie, Mayor of Torrington, is hereby designated as authorized representative of the City of Torrington Act on behalf of the governing body in all matters relating to this grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington.
Mayor and counsel, I'll stand for questions if you have questions regarding the projects.
I think the primary question I have and want to make sure that we're clear on, these are grants that are 100% funded by the Department of Homeland Security?
Yes, sir. It is federal money passed through the state Wyoming Office of Homeland Security.
So, there is no possible expense for the city?
The only possible expense that can occur is if a project runs over, which we obviously know at bidding time. If a project runs over, the city can choose to expend the extra money to take care of the project or walk away from the grant.
These first two items, the emergency management vehicle and the police special missions vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Did it seem like we already applied for those, didn't we?
Yes, we did. We've applied for an emergency manager vehicle. This will be the fourth time around. It hasn't been granted yet. The specialized mission vehicle for the police department was applied for last year and not granted. It is one of those things where the, what we call the Senior Advisory Committee, which consists of staff at WOES and state government offices and other emergency managers in the state, carefully analyze the amount of money that is available, the national priorities that are dictated by FEMA and Department of Homeland Security, and the state priorities, and they fund these projects accordingly.
Now, when these are submitted, is there a 1, 2, 3, 4 project?
A priority listing?
Yeah.
Yes. When a single agency submits the... When a single agency submits the funding, they are asking us this year to prioritize it. The priority listed on this was the non-lethal training equipment for the police department. That's simulations, training equipment. That was priority one. EMC vehicle was priority two. The specialized mission vehicle for the police department was number three, and the wastewater treatment plant was number four. Again, those priorities, we try to align those with the priorities listed, the national priorities listed in the Notice of Funding Opportunities.
The granting board is... Can't possibly change the priorities, though.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The board can change the priorities and fund...
Absolutely, if you'd like to.
These figures for these items, are they on a bid basis, or are they just...
Please take your question again. There's something ticking in the background, and I'm having trouble hearing you.
The prices of the items? Did you guys get bids on them, or did you just look?
Not bids, we got quotes. You understand what's going on in the automotive industry. The specialized mission vehicle for the police department is a Ford Explorer Max, you know, the long Ford Expedition, I'm sorry. And there was $10,000 difference from base cost of the vehicle last year to this year. And that also includes what we call furniture in the vehicle, storage, gun lockers, that type of thing, emergency vehicle lighting, radio equipment, the whole package for that vehicle. The emergency management vehicle is a vehicle, a topper, a slide bed, and emergency vehicle equipment. No, I've already got radio equipment in the existing vehicle and tools and all that stuff, so that's not listed in that vehicle. So, it comes... It was about $8,000 more than the same vehicle last year.
Now, the specialized mission vehicle is not an armored vehicle?
No, sir. It's a Ford Expedition, a long one. No, we're not going to get any MRAPs out. Can you or the chief explain its purpose to me? I can sure try, but... Chief Johnson, would you like to address that?
Charlie, we're looking for a vehicle that will allow us to respond to a scene with all of the equipment that we would need to have right there. It would include a mix of tactical equipment, a mix of administrative equipment, other gear. Our goal would be to be able to write a search warrant right there on scene, print it out, have it ready to go, have all of our evidence collection equipment there, have bullet-resistant shields, entry equipment, less lethal equipment, all of the things that we would need to respond to anything from a tactical incident to an in-depth search warrant would be our goal in responding with that vehicle.
Chief Johnson, would this vehicle, if it were to come to pass, be assigned to a particular officer to use on a regular basis?
It would be assigned to Assistant Chief Pat Conley. He supervises our investigations team, and he also leads a lot of our tactical effort. So, we would have him respond with that, so that he's always coming out anyways. We'd never give him time off. But we would always want him to respond, and he would have that equipment with him.
Now, as far as the non-lethal training equipment, we've already got some non-lethal stuff, right?
This is actually a little bit different from the standpoint of utilization. So, this is simulations equipment. If you recall, last year, we did our first regional training endeavor to really focus on an active threat in our schools. We would really like to continue being more and more aggressive on preparing for that type of a scenario, be it in a school or anywhere else, because sadly, we see those events happening more frequently across the country. The best way that we can train police officers for that type of a scenario is to put them in the most realistic situation we possibly can. And so, the equipment that Chuck has so graciously supported us in doing this grant on is weapon systems that exactly mimic what we use day in and day out in our police work. And rather than shooting live ammunition, they shoot wax pellets. It's a simulated round, so we can completely simulate force-on-force training like we did last August going into the schools. The things that we focused on with this grant, the only equipment we currently have is handguns, and our officers deploy with rifles. And so, we'd like to also have a long gun system with simulations so that our officers can deploy as realistically as possible with a shoulder-fired weapon. The other things that we focused on heavily in this grant are protective equipment. Our simulated bad guys last year were very gracious and kind in sacrificing their bodies for the effort of our training, but they wound up with some pretty substantial polka dots, if you will, as a result of being struck with the rounds. And so, we're outfitting for two simulated bad guys to have much more protective equipment so that it's a more comfortable experience for them as we're engaging in the training.
And again, I want to ask, these requests are in line with the priorities?
Yes. For example...
The granting agency has.
Right. The national priorities coming down, one of them is protection of soft targets in crowded places. So, when you talk about training for force-on-force situations, which is, you know, you're talking about active shooter training, where the cops are running in somewhere to face an active shooter. This lines up very well with that national priority. And also, planning is always a priority. So, in doing this and establishing this regional program, we'll call it, this regional intent, we're lining up with planning priorities, we're lining up with operational coordination, because if you witnessed the... If you witnessed the training last year, what you would have seen was a mixed group of a couple Torrington PD officers, a highway patrolman, and a sheriff's deputy, or a Wheatland cop, sheriff's deputies. We had Fort Laramie, police officer there, Torrington, Goshen County, Fort Laramie, or Wyoming Highway Patrol. Because in a real incident, in the instant that it happens, the first... There's two guys on duty in Torrington, and there's going to be deputies coming in, and it's important for them to be able to work as a team in these force-on-force incidents. So, the training, the old saying, "Train as you fight, fight as you train." So... The wastewater treatment plant fence project is 6,225 feet of chain-linked fencing to surround the wastewater treatment plant. That also falls underneath the community resilience, because what we're doing is we're deterring pedestrian entry into the facility. It's important to note that it would be easy for somebody to go in there and tamper with equipment and damage the facility, as well as damage, both physically or biologically damage, the facility. Because if you interrupt the biologic train that's happening to process that sewage, we're going to be having problems regrowing the bugs, so to speak, in the existing lagoons. So, all of these projects are within the... All of them meet multiple planning, operational coordination, protection of soft targets, things like that, so...
And I had a conversation with you. There have been deer fall in there, dogs fall in there, tumbleweeds.
Yeah.
I don't know if any people have fallen in there. I hope not, because, I mean, it would be unpleasant, but you could... It could be fatal.
Yes.
If that's lined with slick edges, and you may not be able to get out of there if you fall into there.
The lagoons are lined with a very heavy plastic that probably is quite greasy. Well, we started the conversation about grease in the sewer, so...
All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for either Mr. Canyon or Chief Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution 2023-8.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve Resolution Number 2023-8 authorizing submission of four Wyoming Homeland Security grant applications for the purchase of essential vehicles, equipment, and security fencing for the city of Torrington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing Resolution Number 2023-8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That resolution is passed. Next item on the agenda is the landfill consulting engineer five-year agreement. Director of Public Works Harkins, could you enlighten us on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. It's my recommendation that counsel approve retaining Enberg Miller Engineers under a five-year agreement beginning July 1, 2023, to perform engineering services for the landfill and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Basically, Enberg Miller Engineers has been the landfill consultant since August of 2013. Since that date, there have been 13 different amendments to that agreement. As I've listed on the memo, there have been numerous items that they have performed for the city, but I think the most notable one is the design and permitting of the Cell 14 for landfill number two. Some of the items that may be requested are listed further down on that memo. But two of the items that definitely will have amendments are the environmental monitoring, sampling, and reporting for landfill number two, which they have been doing since 2013. They'll continue to do that. And preparing a feasibility study and a cost estimate to relocate the Baylor facility out at the landfill. Counsel approved in last year's budget a certain amount of money for that work to be done. This basically would proceed with getting a consultant to proceed with that work. All these proposed amendments would be included in the agreement, and obviously, would have to come before counsel for your approval or denial, as you see fit. The agreement and the resulting amendments would be funded out of the sanitation fund. If you have any questions?
So, the original contract was back in 2013, and it's had 13 amendments?
Yes.
So, it's quite cumbersome to review that contract, because you've got the basic contract and 13 amendments?
It's getting very difficult, yes.
And this is sort of a fresh start, same engineering firm?
Same engineering firm. They've been doing a really terrific job for the city. They've been really responsive, and they work well with the state's DEQ. We've had very little negative comments from DEQ regarding the work that's been submitted to them.
And they're in Casper, right?
Actually, they're statewide. They have an office out of Cheyenne, office out of Casper. Steve Molt, who was the individual that was mainly working with us, was out of Riverton, but he is now retiring, so we'll be working both with the Casper and the Cheyenne offices.
And then, I think you mentioned this, but as proposed work comes up, the price is determined, and the council, it has to come before the council to approve that work?
Exactly. The consultant will prepare an amendment to the agreement. He'll propose a price and lay out a scope of work of what he'll do for that price. I'll bring that to the council and present it to you, and you'll make a decision.
So, I guess what I'm saying, this puts this engineering firm on retainer, so to speak, that are available to be used for these purposes, and they're sort of locked in to help us when the need arises?
Correct. They're making a commitment to be our, basically, our consultant for the next five years.
Any further questions, councilmen?
And this is a whole-new agreement, it's not an amendment, right?
No, this is an all-new agreement. Starting fresh.
Because I didn't like all the other ones, anyway. Let me keep track of them.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve this landfill consulting engineer five-year agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the landfill consulting engineer five-year agreement with Enberg Miller Engineers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That landfill consulting engineer five-year... That landfill consulting engineer five-year agreement is passed. Next item on the agenda is number seven, the 2023 golf fees. Mr. Dent is here to answer questions regarding that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
This is, uh... This was actually something that should have been on the rate sheet and the fees earlier this year when we approved those. It got left off, and it's essentially a punch card that allows maybe an individual that doesn't get to play very often, or otherwise maybe wouldn't buy the individual single pass at a lesser fee. So they're actually getting 12, 18 hole rounds for the price of 10, and there's 24 pheasants on it, $310. So there's 12 pheasants on there, which represent nine holes each. So if they played 18 holes, we'd punch it twice. So if Councilman Victorin wanted to play nine holes on that card, he'd just punch it once. So it's just an opportunity for somebody who maybe can't even afford the pass, or doesn't get the opportunity to play, or might not otherwise buy the pass itself. So it's just something we left off on the earlier rate sheet.
And it's my understanding that these 2023 golf fees that are listed, except for the 18-hole punch card, were approved on November 15 of 2022 by Mayor and Council?
That's correct.
So the only thing you're asking the Mayor and Council to do this evening is approve the 18-hole punch card?
That is correct.
And question I have, I mean, how, you've had these before, correct?
Mm-hmm.
How, how many get sold?
Uh, we sell about 15 of them, and probably out of that 15, only one of them uses all their punches.
Okay, so oftentimes, they're paying the full price, but don't take advantage of all the opportunities?
Exactly. And they know that going into it.
And it's yearly, good for one year?
One year, January 1st to December 31st.
So if a guy buys one in April, it's?
Same thing.
Runs out?
Yep, December 31st.
Any further questions for Mr. Dent?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the addition to the 18-hole punch card to the golf fees.
I have a motion to approve for the 2023 golf fees, the punch card, 18-hole punch card fee at the price of $310 each. Do I have a second? That's from Councilman Deal, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Peters, or Councilman Patterson?
Yeah.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving that 18-hole punch card at $310 per card signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. That 18-hole punch card at $310 per card is approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Dent. Next item on the agenda is item eight, a special event permit. LeAnn Madison Braden, and I'm not sure, is it Connor or Conhour?
Why is it Ann?
Okay. With Goshen Economic Development are requesting a special event permit for the summer concert series to be held in the city parking lot behind Vandal Drug on May 31, June 7, June 14, June 21, June 28, 2023. Set up to begin at 3:00 PM, event to run 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. Chief Johnson, can you speak to this?
Certainly. The folks from Economic Development, we had a number of conversations about this event and looked at different options. Ultimately, they submitted the permit for the City Lot 5 location. From the city perspective, we look at that from the standpoint of if we can manage the safety of pedestrians inside of that event, which we can at that location, if the pending liquor permits or catering permits would be issued, can we appropriately manage the liquor consumption and make sure that the liquor is contained at that location, and we can manage that at that location, and then making sure that the noise can be managed at a reasonable level. And so those are the three checkboxes that we looked at at that location. I met with the team at Economic Development and put together the agreement that I included with the permit, and I can let them speak to anything else or answer any of the questions that you folks might have related.
Council, do you have any questions for Chief Johnson?
My understanding is this is pretty much the same as what we did last year.
Yeah, we, I mean, the event morphed a little bit last year from the standpoint of where we initially looked at stage positioning and then moving that, trying to minimize noise impacts and make sure that we're staying reasonable with that impact on other businesses, particularly the theater that's there. We're going to do a little bit of a change this year based on their recommendation for stage positioning, where we're going to try to twist that stage just a little bit to the north and still face it east to minimize noise projection towards the theater. The other changes from last year, last year we looked at closing the parking lot down fairly early. I can't, I think it was two or three o'clock in the afternoon, which was difficult. I mean, when you're running a special event, you want it to be safe, but you also want to minimize impact. And so closing that parking lot at that early stage of the day was uncomfortable and made it more challenging. So this year, we're really kind of sticking to just looking at six parking spaces. They've figured out after setting up and taking down the stage a number of times, that they really can get everything they need done in those six parking spaces, which seems more reasonable to me, so that's kind of what the amendment was for this year.
And the start time is a half hour later this year than last year?
Yeah, that was the proposal. We, for those of you who attended last year, the attendance was pretty sparse from 6:00 to 7:00, because the sun is baking right down onto that parking lot. And if people were there, they tended to be hiding behind the restrooms where they got a little bit of shade. And so from the standpoint of minimizing road closure, minimizing impact in the parking lot, and utilizing a better shade platform, if you will, pushing it to 6:30 and then closing it up at 9:00 seems to be the most reasonable alternative.
And it's a little bit different this year, I understand. East A will remain open. Traffic on East A will?
Yeah, thank you, I should have mentioned that. So again, the conversations and proposal from Economic Development, the business landscape has changed a little bit from last year. Last year, Moose Mercantile was open throughout each concert, and they had merchandise for sale right there on East 21st. And so really couldn't utilize that space to park other vendors or have any other traffic coming in and out, and so that was why East A was closed from 21st to the theater entrance for parking. And since Moose Mercantile is no longer present, we can move that traffic up to East 21st. There's really not a reason to keep East A closed. And we can, I mean, there's a crosswalk right there on the 20th and East A. We can protect pedestrian safety nicely to the north with the closure of East 21st, and that closure will not impact the Vandals Alley, nor will it impact the alley behind the theater and the Elks for emergency response purposes.
So the East 21st will only be closed between East A and the alley?
Mm-hmm. We'll have a barricade, anytime we have a kind of a dead-end closure effect, we'll put a barricade out at Main and East 21st that people can still get around, but we want to let them know before they pull in there that there's a closure, so we don't have any U-turn mishaps, if you will.
So somebody could come from Main, if they want to use the post office to drop off mail, they could still do that?
Yep, yep, they could still get through there and still get to the Vandals Alley or any of the other places that they needed to go, but we would leave that barricade just to give folks a heads up that they're coming into a dead end.
And I want to reiterate, Chief, because I agree with you, the city's primary interest is three things. Can this be done safely? And you've indicated that, in your opinion, it can, and it was last year. Can the alcohol be contained? It was last year, and you've indicated that it can begin this year, and the noise is not violative of our noise ordinance?
Those are...
So those are the three primary things the city government's concerned about?
Yes, sir.
And all those are squared away in your mind regarding this request?
I mean, certainly the reasonableness of noise is always open to discussion. The way that we've tried to look at that is, what would we consider to be unreasonable from any other perspective? And so the agreement that we've looked at is the 80, I mean, you can never have just a hard cutoff of a certain number of decibels, because it fluctuates in that range. But that would be the equivalent of a semi-truck parked in an alley. I mean, that's 80 to 85 decibels is a semi-truck that would be parked in an alley, and I wouldn't come to, I mean, if a business owner made a complaint to me, or a regular resident's made a complaint to me saying that there's a semi-truck that's idling and it's unreasonable in that timeframe, we wouldn't look at that as a violation of ordinance or statute at that level. So I, I mean, that, again, that's a, that's not an easy thing to look at with a hard answer, but from a reasonable, reasonableness standpoint, we felt like that was a pretty reasonable way to look at it.
Okay. And I noticed last year, the event, I'll use the word catered to, all ages and interests, so to speak. You had, when I was there, you had events for the kids, you had the music, alcohol could be purchased by those legally able to do it. So you're, the broad spectrum, from children to people who want to sit and have a drink and listen to music?
That might be a better question for LeAnn or Braden, but my understanding of their proposal is that that would continue to be, I mean, the goal that was presented to me as part of this permit was to have very much of a family outing on a Wednesday night in Torrington.
Thank you, sir. Before I ask for comment from the public, speaking in favor and against, any further questions from the council for Chief Johnson?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, on the decibels.
Sir.
Last year.
Okay.
What was, I noticed you were, I was a spectator in the event, I noticed you were taking some sort of reading, so I wondered, kind of recalling what last year's event was like, what was?
So we were, we stayed right in the 80-decibel range. There were a couple, we had met with the folks who managed the theater ahead of time and evaluated that, and looked at what essentially the reduction of noise was going to the theater, and again, looking for that reasonableness standard. So we, a couple of times, it was over and we had to turn it down 40 to 45 range inside, which at that level, it was, I mean, it would have to be very, very quiet in the movie to have that be an impact. So that was the reason that we went with that, and I tried to stay on top of that as much as I possibly could. And you'll notice in the rating, or in the agreement there, essentially, we're laying out how that's going to be monitored, is that needs to happen at the beginning of the concert, at the beginning of every band, midway, and then if there's ever a complaint, then we need to address that.
And then the other question would be the, the closure of certain parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
Was it just the spaces that would be closed for the stage prior to the event, or is it those, I don't know if you have this, shaded in yellow?
I do, let me get to it. So is this the one you're looking at?
Yes.
So this actually doesn't really depict the parking spaces that would be closed. This shaded yellow area is how the event would be laid out at the time, and again, this is from LeAnn and Braden, so you folks feel free to jump in if I'm misspeaking in any way, shape, or form. The six parking spaces that would be impacted are those there where the blue boxes that says banned, because that's the space that they would need in order to get in and get the stage set up. The stage, again, from my communication with them, is kind of a limiting factor related to this event, because it takes an extremely long time to set up. And so we really are trying to limit that impact and give them the freedom they need to set up without completely messing up those parking, or the parking lot for every other business downtown.
So my question more or less is, those, other than for the stage, no parking spaces have been reserved, asked to be closed?
That would be all they would be permitted to close, would be those six spaces right there where that blue box is for banned. The rest of the parking lot would close at 5:30, when the event was being set up.
So is there a, you know, if somebody has parked there after the closure, is there a contingency?
Well, last year, we had a couple of those, and we had to do a little bit of scrambling to go figure out who owned the car and ask them to help out. We didn't have any problems with it. I mean, everybody, the folks from Economic Development have in their plan to come in ahead of time with flyers and make sure that everybody's aware, and they'll be doing poster boards, I believe, in the entrance. If that does happen, we'll go contact and work with those folks. I don't see that being a towing situation, because I think we'd be thin for that being a tow, but worst-case scenario, we might have to take the car off and then utilize some officers to help get it out of there later when the person returned the car.
And how many officers would be required to be present from beginning to end?
I'm willing to pitch in and help out each night. The nice thing about this location is that because the boundaries are really easy to monitor, we're going to set up essentially a diagonal entrance with staffing at those entrances. The staffing will consist, and this was part of the agreement with Economic Development, so we'll have an entrance on the northwest and the southeast that are staffed, and signed for no outside alcohol, dogs, you know, whatever else they decide to do for inside of their event. But a person standing at that location can actually see diagonally down two sides of the event to monitor for alcohol potentially leaving the event, and make sure that people aren't sneaking in and out. And then the person at the other corner can see down the other two sides. So if we have at least one officer inside monitoring it, it's really not an issue. I mean, we had very little problems last year, and then we rotate our patrol guys. We did our best to have two in there at all times, but we're just rotating patrol guys in and out and making sure that that's covered, and it really didn't impact our staffing, and I was, I'm happy to come help out with it, so myself or Pat will be glad to assist.
I got a few questions, but I don't know who they're to.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it would be pertinent to have the event folks come up?
Yes, at this point?
Thank you.
I think we're done with Chief Johnson, at least momentarily, is Ms. Mattis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me. Yeah, I can answer any questions you may have, but a couple things that weren't covered yet. We do plan on paying that event permit fee to the city council as well. And we're starting the process now, it's kind of early on, but we really need to get the fundraising aspect kicked off and get that effort going as well, so that's kind of why we're in the process now. Last year, this event was huge, it was super successful. We saw growth at each event throughout, and yeah, just wanted to make a few tweaks to it. We are holding it in consecutive weeks this year rather than every other week. We feel that it's just really beneficial for the community to gather. Part of the Main Street program is making sure we have a place for our community to gather, and that's where this event stemmed from. We also conducted a survey recently, and we had over 90 respondents, and found that one of the main points was that approximately 75% of the respondents liked the location of the event. And yeah, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are the food vendors going to be allowed to open before the 6:30 time?
That hasn't been discussed just yet, but last year, we kind of had them open as the event got started, so I don't foresee them opening prior to the event.
I'm just thinking, some people might want to eat down there a little earlier than that.
Gotcha. Maybe something to think about, yeah.
And then the food vendors that you do have, I imagine they're... And then, the food vendors that you do have, I imagine they're going to have to fill out a catering permit from the city?
Correct, correct, yes.
You mentioned a Main Street program?
Yes.
Tell me a little bit about that.
Absolutely. So, I am the Community Development Director with Economic Development, and part of my job is, we are a certified Main Street community, and it's a national organization, and I am new to the program. I've been at Economic Development for about eight months now, actually headed to Boston to learn a lot more about the Main Street program, but it really is centered around having a space for our communities to gather, to help with economic development, and, you know, one of our main ideas is to provide events that are centered around community involvement, so.
Community involvement in a downtown area?
In a downtown area, yes.
That was my, sort of what I was going to ask as well, that your participation in this Main Street program requires you to have events in the downtown area, is that?
I wouldn't say a requirement.
My follow-up question would be, have you looked at other areas to have this event?
We absolutely have, absolutely, yeah. We have actually looked at holding this event on Main Street rather than the parking lot. The main issue with that was the timing. It takes Crossroads Music three hours to set up the stage and get the sound set, and we cannot close Main Street down until five o'clock. That puts our event time start at eight o'clock. So, you know, we've considered, I shouldn't say that, we've heard that people would like to have this in a park, but that's not, that's not the whole idea behind the program. It's to bring people downtown, to have a vibrant downtown community.
Have you heard any comments about increased foot traffic as a result of this for local businesses on Main Street?
You know, with these events, bringing two to three hundred people downtown, you know, they're going to see storefronts, you know, whether they're open or not. That could bring residual business, maybe not that particular day, but somebody walking downtown may see something that they want to head back for later. Jackie Van Mark did mention that it brought business to her store downtown, so addicting.
Well, I was going to say, since the parking lot is closed during the event, the place to park is going to be on Main Street.
Right, exactly.
The nearest place to park.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, mhm. So, yep, people are going to see their storefronts, and we have an amazing Main Street, and getting eyes on those businesses is a priority.
But if it was on Main Street, those businesses wouldn't necessarily have to close.
Correct, correct. The main issue with having it on Main Street is the timing.
I mean, I don't know whether you're familiar with it, what they do in Deadwood every year, but they just close off the whole Main Street, a block of Main Street, with all the vendors, or all the stores still stay open.
Right, yeah.
But that's a two- and three-day event thing, so they close it off for two or three days.
Okay, yeah.
My question, my next question would be, is there a plan, if the concept is to encourage a vibrant community in the downtown business district?
Yeah.
What is the plan to encourage business and commerce?
Yes.
To go along with the event?
Fantastic question. You know, we're in the process right now of all the planning, and of course, we have to find out whether or not we can hold the event, but the plan is to go down and visit with all of our Main Street businesses to see what we can do to make that happen. You know, I've had a few ideas here and there. For example, maybe we hold a scavenger hunt where people have to, and the incentive is to go into businesses prior to the concert. You know, you spend a certain amount of money at three different businesses downtown. Bring us your receipts, we'll put you in a drawing, and we'll do some sort of giveaway. Just an idea off the top of my head, but I really want to get downtown and visit with our Main Street businesses to see what that looks like for them, and, you know, if they have ideas for that as well, and absolutely, we'll implement those.
I know last year, about the third, second, third or fourth time they had it in a parking lot there, somebody brought in some tables, picnic tables.
Yes, yeah.
Is there any thought to that again?
Yeah, absolutely. That was Western Province out of Yoder. They actually brought those from Yoder to set up, donated them to the event, which was fantastic, and I do believe they are planning on doing that again.
Talk to me a little bit more about the vendors, the food and beverage vendors. Do you have those lined up?
We do not, as we just aren't certain whether we'll go forward, which I'm hoping we do. We, our beverage vendors are local businesses. Last year, we had the Bronco Bar, Cater One, Open Barrel Brewery. We had The Mint and Three-O-Seven, Bar and Grill, and, am I forgetting? So, local businesses held those permits, the beverage permits.
They each got a chance at one of the evenings?
Correct, mhm, yeah. And then, food, Three-O-Seven and The Bronco also came to other events to sell food, and we also had a couple of food trucks available as well, which were a huge draw.
Food trucks, are there food trucks, local food trucks?
We don't, unfortunately, we don't have any local food trucks. If anybody wants to open a food truck, let's do it. Yeah.
So, I guess, Mr. Mayor, from my standpoint, a few things in your application have, I'm relieved to see.
Okay.
The closure of the parking lot earlier last year, of course, I wasn't on this council then, but the closure earlier in the day, in my opinion, impeded business during that time, especially those folks that needed access to that parking lot. So, I'm grateful to see that the closure of the parking lot this time, or proposal, is My concern this time around, or not necessarily concerned, but a wish of mine, is going back to what you said earlier about creating this vibrant downtown community.
Mhm.
And I want to see, or my wish, I should say, that there is more involvement with our merchants downtown to benefit from this concert. If we can't have it on Main Street, and I don't know the temperature of the merchants downtown, whether they would be in favor of that or not, but if the showcase can't be directly on Main Street, somehow, I would like to see those merchants be able to come off half a block to showcase themselves.
Absolutely.
If that is the, if that's the goal.
Yeah, absolutely, and that is open to anybody, that is open to any business in our downtown area.
And finally, my final concern, I've talked with a business that is directly affected by the event, they're closed the first two days of the week.
Mhm.
Has there been, given any thought to having this event on one of those days?
Yeah, we have, we've considered every option. So, we are contracted with Crossroads Music out of Scotts Bluff. They are the ones that also do this concert series with Scotts Bluff, Bands on Broadway, I believe is what it's called. There's also one in Alliance, so the one in Scotts Bluff is held every Thursday, Alliance is Friday. Our options were either Wednesday or Saturday. We felt, you know, in visiting with some of our businesses downtown, that Wednesday night is kind of a slower night for them, and they were wanting us to do something to pick business up on that night. So, that is the main reason we chose Wednesday nights.
I know as far as having on Main Street, Bronco Bar has a band every year that they close the street off for.
Right, and that, I believe, goes until later in the evening, and Chief might be able to speak to that. I don't have all the details on that, but...
That is a later closure, and frankly, I'm probably the stick in the mud when it comes to closing Main Street because of the impact. I mean, when we used to do Third Thursday, trying to close down at three-thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon, I mean, from a safety perspective, it's really not ideal, and from an impact to businesses, it's also really not ideal. So, when we had a discussion about the potential for having this event on Main Street, that was the limiting factor, was because of the length of time it takes to set up the band, I'm just not, I mean, particularly, we were talking the north of Twenty-first and Main, encompassing the post office block, which would be a pretty low impact, but if we had to close at four o'clock, the post office doesn't close until four-thirty, and we really would have a pretty disparate impact on folks that are trying to live their daily lives, and it really is not a good safety setup to have a full parking diagonal structure, or excuse me, full parking diagonal spots up the block, and then try to empty that at three-thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon while you're in the middle of setting up an event. It's just, it's not a good safety move.
And was there a particular reason why we chose this parking lot instead of the one like, say, over behind Arby's?
As I understand, this lot was made to be a city event space when those restrooms were constructed. And also, to speak to the closure of Main Street, another point there, you know, this is a family-friendly event, it's not a Friday night, stay-out-all-night event, so, you know, we want to bring in activities for kids. We got a lot of really good feedback in our survey that people want to see more of that, something more for the kids, so we're going to implement that as well.
That's a good point. You're going to try to serve the whole spectrum of the community.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And I think that was, I wasn't, obviously, stay on mayor, I was not mayor back in the day when you did the four o'clock closing, but I think that was a hard lesson learned, that is not appropriate to try to shut your downtown area at four. I mean, there's a lot of business that goes on between four and five, and it just doesn't work to shut things down at four in the afternoon. So, I think that's a lesson that we, never say never, but we've learned that that's not so good.
And, I mean, if we push the concert start until, I mean, if we closed at five and it took three hours to set up, and then we tried to run a three-hour concert on a weeknight, we're going to have noise complaints coming out our ears for going to eleven, eleven PM on a Wednesday night. I just, I don't think we can tell that story from a reasonableness standpoint.
Ms. Mattis is up here representing the organization that's asking for the special event permit. Thank you. Do, Council, do you have any further questions for Ms. Mattis? Thank you, Ms. Mattis.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I see there's a lot of people here this evening, so I would ask, first of all, anybody in addition to Ms. Mattis that wants to speak in favor of Council granting this special event permit, is welcome to approach the podium. No, I have one.
Council members. Thank you. My name is Todd Warner. Last year, I was the emcee for the music on Main. I'm just a volunteer helper that thought this was a great thing to do for the community. Did we learn a few things that we could improve on? I believe we did, and we are, you know, we're working to make it better for the community, some of the local businesses. You know, we are still, this is only, this will be our second year, hopefully, you know, and I think Chief Johnson has done a wonderful job making sure that everything has been set up properly. I was in charge of going out and getting some of the, well, actually, I went to the bars. I work for Budweiser out of Cheyenne, and, you know, and I think that if you could visit with each one of the bars that did the event, I think that you will find that they did well. I mean, it's none of my business to know exactly how they did, but I think they did well, and I think that if any of you attended the concerts, you know, I think that it was a very successful thing. And, you know, as far as moving forward and being able to get more of these businesses that could possibly be involved, we are all for that, you know, it's something that, obviously, it's a community event. I mean, we had people, you know, I think that part of the good thing that the location that we had it in is that people could walk. You know, we had a lot of people that walked in. I mean, I was there, I wasn't there as early as some of the folks were that set up, but I can tell you that we were kind of nervous, because at six o'clock, you know, we didn't have a lot of people there, and there weren't a lot of vehicles around, but then, you know, you could see people walking down the streets, side streets, with their lawn chairs, and, you know, and then, yes, the Western Province bringing in the benches, that was an awesome thing, you know, and I think that if we could just continue to have as many people as we did show up last year, I think that, and I think Chief, I think you mentioned something, three hundred-plus people, you know, and I think Chief's probably pretty accurate, you know, coming from a bigger city, he probably knows numbers just by kind of looking out over a crowd. I've been in this community for fifty-two years, and I will tell you that this was a very successful thing. I'll say, you know, Goshen County Fair is a very great thing for this community. What we did in that parking lot, it really was a great thing, and I would love to see it continue, you know, and to talk to the, with the bands that we got, the gentleman from Scotts Bluff does an amazing job for us, and he can do that for us at a little cheaper price, because then he coordinates with, you know, like LeAnn said, with Scotts Bluff and with Alliance, and then we get a better deal and we still get great music. And, you know, we'd love to have local vendors come in. We are open to any of that, I can guarantee it, and I'm talking food vendors, I'm talking whoever. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, and if we do get to move forward with this, we can expand this and make it a bigger and a better event, then maybe someday, we have to move it to a better, a bigger venue, and that would be, you know, great. I mean, we do have some things in mind, and I won't get into those, because I'm not technically on the committee, or I am, but not with the Economic Development, I'm part of this small community, or committee, but I just want to say that, you know, I just think that it's been a wonderful thing for the community, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Would you just let us know your name for the clerk?
Absolutely.
For the record.
Great, thanks, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Prusha, just a local business owner and past president of Economic Development. I know one of the things that's been brought up is what we're trying to do with the... brought up is what we're trying to do with the Main Street program through, uh, Goshen Economic Development. And what's that, what, what is that doing for our downtown businesses? Since COVID pandemic, we track, as I'm sure the city does as well, what sales tax receipts are doing. And throughout the COVID period, Goshen County was one of the highest performing, if not the highest performing state in, uh, Wyoming as far as growth in sales tax revenue. I will say this year, uh, we are on the edge of a recession. But at the same time, I look at our sales tax receipts, which the bulk of that comes from retail sales up and down Main Streets in each of our communities. Sales tax is up over fifteen percent this year over last year. And not to say that you can put a finger on exactly what's driving that. I think there are several factors. I think we have great merchants. I think we have a good support system from Economic Development and our Main Street program, as well as our residents. And the fifteen percent that we are up is leading the state as far as sales tax receipts. Those sales tax receipts go to each community, and they go to the county. Those are pretty sizable increases on a year-over-year basis. And I think that's something that, again, you can't put your finger on exactly what's driving that, but we're doing something right here. And I think, uh, what has happened in trying to drive Main Street, and this is one of the events that helps to do it, I think has been very successful and a testament to what's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prusha. Anybody else out there that wants to speak for?
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Sorry. My name is Tiffany Leslie. I own the Bronco Bar and Grill House. And I would like to speak in favor for our community night. For many years, I have been asked why I don't do a family night on Main Street. And one of the reasons is, is I'm one person versus trying to get all the bands from different towns, um, the whole community involved. With Goshen Economic, they actually took on that responsibility to give the community something that me as a business owner on Main Street couldn't do. And, um, I think that's really awesome that they do that. And I have had so much positive feedback just hearing it in our community since the first one that we have had of how many families actually enjoyed going out, listening to a band, getting home early enough so that way the kids could go to bed, everything else like that. I know a lot of the businesses in my area on the block have definitely benefited from it. Obviously, myself, Met, Open Barrel, because we did some of those catering for them. And that's just extra revenue for us during the summertime when we are slow. The foot traffic had picked up, I know, during the actual event itself. So, our, my restaurant actually had a lot of foot traffic come in it as well during that time, even with me catering and the food trucks. So, that helped us out tremendously on Wednesday nights when we're pretty slow during that weekday. So, I'd just like to speak in favor of it. I think it's awesome that Goshen Economic has put this all together for our community.
When these events took place last year out in front of your business, was that just full?
Yes.
Parking was just full on both sides?
Parking was full, and, um, you could actually see the foot traffic. I had employees calling me, "Hey, is it really busy down there?" Because we can see them walking back and forth.
And I don't know if you took a look in the back parking lot behind your business? Was that full?
Yes. A lot of people do park in the Arby's parking lot and then walk over to the other parking lot, as well as on Main Street.
Now, you said you had, you said you had an increase in foot traffic?
Yes.
Was that from the, from the, from the Main Street bands? Or the?
That was the same nights that the Main Street was doing their bands, yes. Because of all the parking that is behind Arby's, then they continuously walk down towards Main Street, towards that back parking lot by vandals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. All right. Anybody else out there who wants to speak for granting of the special event? Seeing none, I would open it up to anybody who wants to speak against the granting of this special event permit.
Counsel.
Ms. Flanagan, I know we know you.
I know.
Please state your name.
Marie Flanagan, owner of the theater.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to just speak, not in opposition of the event. I think the event is absolutely fabulous. It's the location. Um, Chief Johnson, um, was on a constant phone call with my husband, um, an electrician who knows exactly about decibels. Um, that is part of his field. Um, we were unfortunately, um, impacted by the sound. Um, he said, he referenced a semi-truck. That is not correct. We had Jurassic Park playing, and as you can all think, dinosaurs are not quiet. And we had people leaving during the movie because the sound from the concert was so loud. Um, and I am very thankful that, um, the Bronco Bar had foot traffic. I think that's fabulous. When we try to do an event, we try to benefit all of our businesses because communication between the businesses is absolutely vital. Um, we have not been, spoken to about the events for this event. Anything that has to do with the event has not been spoken to me about. So, learning that it's five consecutive days, uh, we will lose about five, five hundred dollars a day, so that's twenty-five hundred dollars. Plus, we will lose, um, my staff will lose the time. So, that's about five hundred dollars on my staff losing, um, their pay. Um, Yolklicious will also be impacted by the loss of revenue from no one coming into the theater. Last year, graciously, First State Bank did sponsor tickets for, um, students or children to come into the theater and watch the movies. We had ten. From four events that happened, we had ten students, ten children come in for the movie, Jurassic Park. Um, if that tells you anything, the foot traffic was not coming to the theater at all. Um, we didn't have anything to go off of because we've, we had just purchased the theater, and we were just trying to get going. We, we had nothing to go off of. We were not spoken to about planning, doing anything, promoting, nothing. It was, we are doing this, and we're doing this. Um, we don't know anything about a Main Street group. We've never been approached. Um, we're a business. This is what we do. We are here for the community, um, as I've stated many, many times. And I, like I said, I love the event. And I'm, it's, I really was very saddened to hear that there are people stating that the theater wants this event to be shut down. That is absolutely one hundred percent not true. I love events. I love doing things for the community. That's why we did a, a ladies' night. We have a kids' night planned. We have a couples' night this Friday, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Um, but we try really hard to do things for the community itself. We try really hard to plan things with other businesses because I want to make sure I'm doing what's best for not only the theater, because that's the first and foremost, but that I'm impacting the other businesses. If I can do something with an event, then I'm going to try. Um, with Jurassic Park, we included Torington Office Supply. We included, um, Heartland Embroidery. We included, um, Wagner's Floral. They provided all of the floral arrangements inside to turn it into a Jurassic Park style. Um, we had a scavenger hunt for eggs that the kids got to keep, and prizes were given out from our Main Street businesses. Um, I also wanted to include businesses that are not on Main Street because that's important as well. Um, we were impacted, obviously, by the foot traffic, by the noise. And unfortunately, we had some very unhappy patrons about the closing of the parking lots. And they used, um, some very heavily-chosen words against me, um, that they blamed me for doing it. And that's pretty tough when someone comes in screaming at you. Um, so, I would highly encourage that, yes, do we need this event? Yes. But this location is not a proper location. If it's gonna shut down a business that's already closed the day before, two days before, um, we have those availabilities. But if I have to shut down another day, which is gonna have to happen because there's no, there's no way we can avoid it, um, then that just puts into the community that we're closed yet another day. And when you start closing your business day after day after day, they stop coming. And from my perspective, I don't want to see the theater close. That's why we bought it. We wanted to open it for the community. We have taken a huge hit. We've not had any support from Economic Development besides the five thousand dollar grant. That was it. I had to fight to get advertising from the membership that I was given. So, if there's anything I want this event to go through, just not behind the theater because it does hurt, hurt us detrimentally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flanagan. Are there any others who want to speak against the granting of the special event permit?
Counselor.
My name is Ty Correll. My wife and I, or my wife Kelly and I own Heartland Embroidery on Main Street. Um, a lot of my questions, and I'm, believe me, I'm not against it at all. I am all for it. I kind of echo what Marie said. If it is in the best benefit for all businesses, not excluding some businesses. Um, it started out on the Main Street. We had some discussions about that. We got everything worked out. It proceeded along fine. Then they moved it behind. Um, a bunch of my questions were answered. Shane asked a couple of them. Why, why not look at Monday and Tuesday when the theaters closed? Why not look at a city park? Uh, Chief Johnson even brought it up. A lot of people not being there on the hot concrete when it's six o'clock. Might not put it in the park where you got shade. Go to Jordan Park. You're right next to the pool. You got shade. You got a playground. You got the ball fields. You got basketball hoops. You want to talk about doing it for the community. There's all sorts of stuff there for the kids to do if it's on the grassy area. Um, but like I said, these are a lot of things that, a lot of questions were answered tonight, and Leanne did a very good job answering a lot of them, why we couldn't do this. But at the same time, these were also questions that could have easily been solved by convincing us. Like Marie said, we have not heard nothing from Economic Development about their proposed plan of what they are doing on these five nights. Tonight is the first night we are hang, or hearing about it. We've got three wonderful ladies that work for us at Heartland. Kelly and I are very seldom there because they run the day-to-day operations. We contacted them just to make sure that we are all on the same page, and they said the exact same thing. Nobody has stopped by and talked to us about it. If Economic Development is actually about local businesses and building this community, they need to be better in contact. We are literally right next door to them. We're right next to Twenty First and Main. Stop by and tell us. Give us a plan. But to show up here and ask you guys to vote on it, to vote for the permit, if it passes tonight without any other further discussion, to us as a business owner, it looks like, you know what? We've already passed it. This is what we're doing, without any information or any comment from other local businesses. It just doesn't seem right that they would put the horse in front of the cart. And I understand that Leanne said that they were gonna come around and try to drum up some support. Why wouldn't you drum up some support before you show up and ask for a permit to be voted on? And I know this, this has nothing to do with you guys. This is something that we should be discussing with Economic Development, but since they don't come by, it's kind of hard for us to discuss that with them. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. Any others wishing to speak against this special event permit? I don't see any takers. Um, I just want to say this. Um, as the government, the city of Torington, our three primary items of concern are safety, alcohol containment because alcohol's going to be served, and the noise. Okay? That's primarily my concern as mayor. How Economic Development communicates with the local businesses and how the local businesses communicate with Economic Development, that's not my purview, my job. One advantage I see to extending the time for this and allowing anybody who wanted to speak is this. Mr. Correll, I think you said it well. Maybe there needs to be more communication. I don't know. I heard your side of it. I didn't hear anybody else's side of it. And I know there's always six sides to any story. But maybe this is a, it was an opportunity for the pros and the cons to get together in this forum and sort of let everybody know where they, where they stand and why they stand. And maybe I'm, or I'm hopeful that that maybe that communication with the, with Economic Development and private businesses can increase and be more productive. But I, and I just want to reiterate, um, as mayor, I see the primary, the city's primary interest as, is it safe? Can we contain the alcohol? And is the noise going to be an issue? And then I will allow any other member of the council to speak to the issue.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Economic Development is, is very important to any community, is a lifeblood of, of any community. And that, uh, that they're attempting to do something, which, at least in one case, has increased in foot traffic. Whether that results in increased sales, I'm not sure. But, uh, my son lives in Lander. They have the Lander Live Series there, which is indeed at the city park. But they do have a very interested person who spent a lot of money himself in, in building a stage, uh, for the park. And so there are lots of things going on there. And there are lots of other communities that do that. But regardless of all the other queries, whether it's the right place or the wrong place, I would just like to speak in favor of this as an event. I think it's very important to the community.
Thank you, Councilman Dill.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would echo some of my colleagues' statements as well that I think the event is a good event. Uh, we don't have a lot of entertainment in this town, in this county, which is unfortunate, but I think this is a good step in that direction to achieve that and bring about some more, um, quality of life for residents of the community at large. Uh, it's difficult for me. I wish the, I wish the subject wasn't contentious. I, I still have my concerns about the location. Uh, I, I find benefit, uh, in, in a park myself. But nevertheless, uh, I, I do think what we've heard here tonight, uh, I think there could be some more lines of dialogue happen between commerce and, uh, other parties for the event, just to alleviate some concerns and, and hopefully find a path forward that is beneficial to everyone. Um, I don't know. Uh, perhaps, I, I understand that Economic Development has to have some, uh, far-in-advanced planning for this type of event. Maybe there's still some things that could be discussed amongst them and, and affected businesses. I don't know. Uh, but I, I, I would like to see, uh, a cohesive sort of understanding amongst everybody involved, uh, that, that arrives at the betterment and, uh, somewhat of a, a positive, uh, finality to the, to the issue. Um, I don't know how that all works, but that goes along with some of my comments I, or questions I asked earlier about involving downtown business, uh, during those hours that are, um, most, most merchants are closed. And, uh, also trying to impact or lessen the imp, excuse me, lessen the impact on, uh, those affected businesses, um, that we've heard from tonight. So, supportive of the event, my mind is still turning on approval or denial of the permit. But, um, communication is always good, as my communication instructor once... but communication is always good, as my communication instructor once instructed me. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would just like to make a comment that I attended every one of the concerts last year, thoroughly enjoyed each one of them, except for the last one when it rained and the wind blew. As far as the noise of the theater, this is the first time I've really been heard about it. And I would ask, did anybody else, I mean, Mr. Chief, did you go inside the buildings to hear the noise or anything?
Many times, yes.
Was it as bad as?
Well, I, I guess I can't relate exactly to what Mrs. Flanagan said. The instances that I was in, I tried to be proactive and reactive to that. Typically, if the movie was absolutely silent, I could just hear the music. But again, maybe there was a loud burst of sound or something that had caused another problem. I did not hear of the concerns that she stated related to folks walking out of the movies, but I did get a couple of phone calls where they had told me that someone had come up to the window and said that they could hear the music. And I, we tried to be very responsive to that. And there were a couple of times when the volume had crept up or the band had changed and that was too loud and we had to make accommodation. So I, I'm sorry, I can't provide a complete answer in terms of whether or not that happened. I can tell you that the experiences that I had in the theater, the movie had to have been incredibly quiet in order for it to be heard.
You changed the location of the bandstand, so I'm assuming that's trying to alleviate that problem?
Yes, our, this will be the third time we've made an adjustment. Our first attempt was a disaster. We had a theory that we would set the band to the east of the theater and project south with the thought that that noise would kind of go past the theater without having an impact. And essentially, it drove the noise right into the back of the theater, and it was totally unsuccessful. We had a very hard time making those decibel ratings to be reasonable, and it was not a, not a good way to have it set up. We transitioned to the band being on the west side of the parking lot and facing east, and then we utilized the food trucks to block sound. And with that, we had pretty good luck. I mean, we were able to consistently keep that down in the 80 to 84 range.
Like I said, I, I really enjoyed the concerts, and I hope we can continue, but it sounds like it needed to work out a few little problems, but hopefully we can get that done, too.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if, if LeAnn, if you could answer a question for me, or anybody from economic development. Is the event contingent upon the approval of the permit tonight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sitner, can you make him up here if you would?
I just have a basic question.
And if you will state your name for the record.
My name's Kelly Sitner. My history would lead me to believe that sound travels out from a speaker. Is that correct?
I'm no sound engineer, so I would think it goes out from the speaker.
Yeah. So my, my question is, if you really wanna keep the sound lower, why wouldn't you put the band on the north side, or on the, yeah, on the north side of the movie theater with all the speakers projecting out so the sound's traveling out and away? When it was pointed south, obviously, it was going right towards the theater. Any other location, you're gonna get sound going towards the theater. My experience has been a few, and I ran many dances back in my days in Hershey, but your, your, the quietest part of a band is behind the speaker system. So for my two cents, I think somebody should investigate that, and maybe we could reduce the sound even further.
What, I had that same question myself. As I look at the diagram of the potential setup here, the bandstand is on the southwest corner of the parking lot, pointing northeast. So it'll be hitting the courthouse and off into that area for the most part. And then the food trucks are east of it and north of it to keep it from going directly east.
This makes sense to me that the sound projects out. If you don't want sound, put the band on the north side of it, and you won't have near as much, in my opinion. And I'm certainly somebody that's smarter than I could figure that one out, but food for thought.
Thank you, Mr. Sitner.
I guess one of the suggestions to move the speakers like that would be, try it this way. The first one have done work, then you can always move the speakers to the other place for the next one.
There's, there's a little bit of a space issue there in terms of needing to keep that alley open that's immediately north of the theater. I, I'm not against trying that, but it, it does create, I mean, one of the things that you sometimes feel off of the back of the stage, having walked around a lot, there's a fair bit of bass that moves off of those speakers. I mean, they're ported in the back, so you may not have quite the decibels, but you do tend to have a fair bit of bass. And you also, because of the size of the sta, of the stage and the need to keep that alley clear and the amount of equipment that goes behind the stage, we end up compressing pretty close to the bathrooms. And so we're pretty much right on top of the bathrooms, and then sound is reflecting off of the bathrooms, and we've got a smaller space there. I, I'm not against trying it if that's, I mean, it's, it's not my event. It's Economic Development's event, and if they feel like that's something worth trying, I'd be happy to support that and look at it. It would alter what we'd have to do to impact parking and different things. But part of what they have submitted is an understanding that we can try some different things to mitigate that noise and make it as least impactful as possible.
As I look at the diagram that's in there, the band is located on the southwest corner, and it looks like it's pointed northeast. So if you're correct about the bass, then the bass is not going to go into the theater building. It's gonna go across the alley and down the alley if it's set up the way it's configured here.
That, that was the intent of the discussion that we had.
So last year, it was this way?
Correct. And Mr. Councilman Kelly just pointed out, last year it was on the west side, the alley, and almost pointed due east, right?
Well, the first one, it was over here, and directed to the theater, back of the theater.
Well, certainly, that would be my hope, that whatever can be done to mitigate the noise that's affecting the theater should be looked into.
Yep. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree. There are a couple of us up here that had some involvement in radio, too, and have been used to dealing with sound.
Maybe we should be asking you.
And I can, I'm not an acoustic engineer, but I can tell you that the vast majority of sound is projected intentionally through the speakers toward the front. However, there is this thing called feedback, so you do get some coming back the other direction. Okay. But that is the best of, of all worlds, I would think, putting it at that corner.
The way it's set forth in this diagram.
We've been at this a while.
I would entertain a motion to approve of the special event permit, item number eight on the agenda, the request by LeAnn Madison Braden Connor with Cochen County Economic Development, their special event permit for the summer concert series. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve this special event permit. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a count, or a second from Councilman Patterson. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen?
Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the special event permit, allowing economic development to put on this special event for the summer concert, concert series, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
There is four ayes and one nay. The ayes have it, so the special.
Councilman Victor.
Nay, yes.
Four ayes, one nay. The special event permit is passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a catering permit for Julie Harshberger with 307 Sports Bar and Grill, requesting a catering permit for the Torrington Cinemas Couples Night Out on Friday, March 24th, 2023, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Chief Johnson, can you speak to that?
Certainly. This is very similar to the Ladies Night that they did at the theater a month ago, probably. We had no concerns with that. This is a very safe, pleasant event. The way that Mrs. Flanagan and Julia run it is pretty risk-free. There's nobody under 21 in the theater, or at least nobody under 21 that's a patron of the theater. They check IDs at the door, the services for upstairs and downstairs, so we don't have to worry about keeping anybody separate. The only people who are underage in the theater are employees who manage the ticket sales and yogurt sales, and they're monitored by an adult. So I really don't have any concerns. It's a recommend approval, and seems like a good event.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman, do you have any questions for Chief Johnson about this request for a catering permit?
Counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to let you guys know. I'm so sorry.
Sorry. I just wondered if the council had any questions for Chief Johnson. I don't see any Mrs. Flanagan, so please go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. I would just wanted to let you know that with our Ladies Night event, it was a huge success, not only for my business, but for the entire downtown. Our entire downtown, we wanted to make sure that we invited everybody that was in any crevice and everything that we could possibly find. The women of our community showed up big time. And not only did they show up for a ladies event, but they showed up for the rest of the businesses downtown. And even though it was after the retail businesses, the bars were overflowing. It was wonderful, not only downtown, but also at 307. And it was a wonderful, wonderful, unexpected showing of what we could do and help our community. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that after we found out that that was an awesome turn of events, we are gonna start planning more events that will benefit the, the businesses downtown, because we do believe that that is one amazing factor that's just happened to happen with those businesses. I did get a, a lot of thank yous from the businesses, and it was, it was a great, great thing to know that taking the time to make sure that the details were in order, that it was a blessing in more ways than one. So I just wanted to let you know that we do try really, really hard to impact the businesses around us in a positive way.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The last catering event, or catering permit we approved was the Ladies Night Out.
Yes, sir.
Did, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but did you have a good turnout for that event?
We had an amazing turnout. We had about 125 women show up. We offered two movies, one, 80 for Brady, which was a huge success across the nation. But we also put bridesmaids upstairs. Uh, I'm sorry, not bridesmaids. Bad Moms, Bad Moms upstairs. We also let the community choose between bridesmaids and bad moms. That was, we tried to let the community involvement in our business speak because we are not here for ourselves, we're here for the community. And they chose to have bad moms. And also, for this event, for Couples Night slash Guys Night, we realized the guys don't like to just call up their guy friends and be like, hey, wanna go to the movies? Doesn't happen. So we had to plan a little differently. A lot of the guys, because we try really hard to publicize what we have coming, if I can find out, it's not always possible, and sometimes they change their minds really close to the time that it's supposed to come out. Since John Wick was totally happening and has not been pulled as of today, the guys really wanted this and a Western. Well, we found out that there is a rodeo, college rodeo, happening this Friday. So we're gonna hold on the Western, which we already have scheduled for the Another Guys Night slash Couples Night. But it is one that, that a lot of the cowboys really want to see, and I believe it has Clint Eastwood in it. I'm so sorry. Every Which Way From...
Every Which Way From...
That's the one. Sorry. It's so not my forte.
I think it has Jackson in it, too.
Yeah, so that's the one that was requested. We will have that one, but not this Friday. But obviously, we are gonna do these events a lot more often. We are also gonna do a kids' event twice a year, as well as ladies event twice a year, men's night slash couples night twice a year, so that we can accommodate all of the residents in our community, as well as plan some other events. The kids' night, we want to involve a lot more, and I may ask to shut down the street in front of us. But I also went and I talked to all of the businesses just to make sure that that was something that maybe we can start planning on later, but that they were okay with that. And they have been, hands down, so supportive, and I am so thankful for them. So just for future reference, we will probably be coming to you a lot more.
One, one more question for me.
Yeah.
This, the lady that's catering, catering this event on Friday, the 24th?
Uh-huh, Julie.
She's the same one that catered the Ladies?
Yes, sir. Yep. We have a great relationship with them, cost-effective for us. We are using her because it is cost-effective for us. It's something that unfortunately, we are new, and literally every expense is, is coming out of our pocket right now. Literally everything we have to pay for out of pocket because we are not making enough through the theater to supplement. Not your problem. It is totally something that we're working through, and we are building. Jesus Revolution was great for us, but yes, Julie is doing the event right now because cost-effectively, it just works for us. Any other questions I can answer?
Councilman, you have any questions for Mrs. Flanagan?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I would move to approve this catering.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the catering permit to allow Julie Miller Harshberger with 307 Sports Bar and Grill to have a catering, catering permit for the Torrington Cinemas Couples Night Out on March 24th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Victorin. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this catering permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That catering permit is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the bills.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Handed out tonight was a set of bills for you to review. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And I think everybody's aware, but you also had some additional ones that you gave us prior to the meeting.
Yes.
That were not on the agenda. Okay. Or adds to the agenda.
On the second set of bills, on page three of the blog, it says Sam's West Incorporated Interest Charges.
Um, so Sam's is a little strange in their billing. And so what they, what happened, I believe here, is it, what we have started doing is paying each ticket as we get it and not waiting for the statement, because apparently, if you wait for the statement, some of the charges may be late. So that is what happened in this instance. So that is what happened in this instance.
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the bills as presented from March 3rd, or March 8th of '23 to March 21st of '23. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Deal. Oops. Gentlemen, is there any further discussion on the approval of the bills? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the bills from March 8th, '23 to March 21st, '23, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, the bills from March 3rd, March 8th, '23 to March 21st, '23 are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public comment section. I see the public has dwindled a bit. Any members of the public or council members have a comment that they want to bring forward now? Ms. Flanagan?
One last thing. I just wanted to introduce you guys to my staff, and most of you know Stacy, Stacy Lyra, who is fantastic owner of Yogalicious. If you guys have not tried that, I highly recommend it. But I would like to introduce you to my staff, Caitlin Flanagan, Ann Buller, Lexi Flanagan, Shaglee Jackson. These girls are some girls that you need to make sure and watch. They are going places, and I am so proud to have them run our theater, to be a part of the public, to treat the customers and the rest of the community with respect, and trudge through the unfortunate circumstances sometimes you come across in retail. But I wanted to make sure that you guys know who they are, because these girls are, well, let's see, T H S, Lingual, T H S, T H S. And I just want you to know that these girls have truly given their all to the theater, to our community, not only to that, but they are also working pretty much full-time and going to school full-time to further their career, maybe later. Hopefully, they stay at the theater forever. But I just wanted to let you guys know who they are, so that if you ever come in, you will meet them, so. And, and that they stayed. They are wonderful. I'm very thankful that they so graciously stayed to listen and be respectful to you guys for the job that you do. So, thank you.
I appreciate the introduction and appreciate your perseverance. It's what self-governance is about. I wish more people would be involved, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Any, oh, fireman, fire chief, Pat, you're back there. Do you have any comments for the council?
I'm good, unless you guys have any questions from anything. It's been a long night.
Just seeing if you're awake.
Oh, yes.
I, I.
I'm awake.
You dutifully send me a report on these sort of days, and I got that. There's been a little uptick in activity, but it's mostly smoke alarm kind of things, and you had a grass fire that you assisted with.
Yeah, we've had, in the last couple of weeks, a little uptick with some smoke detectors going off, a few carbon monoxide calls, faulty detectors, you know, they kind of wear out. We did have, last week on Monday, Yoder had about a 75-acre grass fire. So with the wind and everything, it's kind of about that time stuff's drying out. The unfortunate thing on that call was soil's still pretty soft, but it burns, so some trucks were getting stuck here and there, and just kind of the time of year it is and the way it goes, so. But things, I think, are going well, and that's about that, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the council?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your service, thank you.
Have a good evening.
We're on item 12 of the agenda. Everything that's on the agenda has been completed, so I will determine that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.